Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Pageant. I am the Waterways Program Chief for the Mass DEP Chapter 91 Waterways Program. Here with me today from Mass DEP, I apologize for missing anyone, Stephanie Mora, Division Director for Wetlands and Waterways Program. Pamela Harvey, longtime technical expert here at the department, having worn many hats. Susan Yu is a program, Waterways Program reviewer. Susan is here as well. There may be others. This is the public hearing. This is the first public hearing of the Waterways Regulations Chapter 91 Resiliency 1.0 Updates. There will be another public hearing just like this this evening at 6:00. Since you all found your way here, the Zoom link to register for that hearing is also the same location. You search DEP Comic Opportunities, you'll be able to find that, just like you found this one. The presentation we're about to give is essentially the presentation that was provided at two public information sessions that were held on January 17. The slide deck will be posted on the department's website. The present, the public information sessions that were held on the 17th are on the DEP's website, as are the draft regulations, and a public summary of the changes that are being proposed. Short agenda for today. This is a public hearing. The department will be, will give a brief summary of the proposed regulations that regulations that are proposed. We will accept public testimony, and then we'll provide some additional information about the schedule. This is, uh, this is not a question and answer format, but rather an opportunity to provide testimony. I will encourage you now and again later to please provide comments in writing while this testimony is being recorded and we will any, any substantial issues that are raised in this, we will of course address. The most efficient and the most productive way of getting your comments considered by the department as we proceed from draft to final regulations is through written comments, and we ask that those written comments be submitted electronically if possible. If not, we'll accept the letters as well. And again, the information for how to submit those comments is provided later in this slide deck. I will ask one of my colleagues to please put the email address for any comments in the chat, and also if you could please put the, a link to the DEP website where the draft regulations and related materials are provided. Thank you. This is the news line from the public information session. We're here to talk about resiliency updates to the Chapter 91 regulations, and this is our 1.0 version. We have a 2.0 starting to work on. So many people have said so much about the need to address climate change, be it sea level rise, increased precipitation, storm surges, et cetera. And the purpose of this presentation is not to justify why these changes are needed, but to tell you what we're doing right now, or we we're about to do right now to address those. And this slide just merely presents just a couple of data points as to why we're here. This is a significant priority of the Commonwealth, a significant priority of the administration, and a significant priority of Mass DEP and the Waterways Program. The 1.0 regulations attempt to address certain, certain base criteria for licensing under Chapter 91. The first and most important change that we are proposing to make is that presently licenses, licenses, applicant seeking licenses for extended terms must consider historical sea level rise. The proposed changes we're seeking would require all projects subject to licensing under Chapter 91 to consider projected climate change, sea level rise, and increased precipitation. What that does, it adds essentially, as I'm seeing this, the second sub-bullet there, it adds water dependent use projects, and a simplified projects, adds renewables. Every project that's coming in for a license of any sort must consider sea level rise. There are, I promise not to read every slide. There are building considerations there. You can see that we're, there's a reference here to moving utilities from the ground floor up to the roof. We're very interested in that change because we would like to encourage, and analyze is not the right word, but we'd like to, like to encourage mixed-use development projects to move utilities off the ground floor where they may be vulnerable, or basements to, to higher elevations. And we'd also like to encourage rooftop solar, and both of those things will be facilitated in additional ways by these changes. The third bullet on here, this is one of my favorite, I will tell you, is clarifying an existing exemption for work in non-tidal rivers and streams. This has to do with, this came to us really as part of culvert replacement projects, and we, we're looking for ways to use existing authority to, by clarifying that, to facilitate certain climate resiliency projects. The Commonwealth is spending considerable amount of money and encouraging municipalities to replace undersized culverts, and we are trying to line up the Chapter 91 regulations with those goals. And this does not create a new exemption. This merely clarifies some things that we've been pushing around for some time. The next two slides identify just a little bit more detail, some of the changes that we're making. It's not my intention to spend a lengthy period of time going through all of these. The slides are, as I said, available on the website, our website, and the actual redline changes to regulations are also available. We made some additions and one deletion to definitions within our regulations. May I ask my colleagues to go unmute? Or actually everyone to go unmute, I think. Your attention may be drawn to the definition of primary frontal dune, and you may be thinking, that's not typically in Chapter 91 jurisdiction. You would be correct in most cases. By adding certain definitions to our regulations, we chose not to leave certain definitions hanging. So for instance, the term, the definition of velocity zone includes the term primary frontal dune. So we chose not to leave that definition hanging, but rather to provide that clarity, trying not to add new words to the regulations that need definitions but don't have them. This slide identifies some of the sections where we made individual changes to the regulations that will trigger the need to consider projected sea level rise. The last sub-bullet, last bullet on this slide directs, well, the regulations and this slide, direct applicants to resilient mass for projections for sea level rise, projections for storm, storm surges, et cetera. When you look at the regulations, you'll see that is not the only source that may be considered. That is the Commonwealth's present clearinghouse for that, so we are directing applicants to that. The change, the specific change in the regulation allows for other credible data, other suitable information to be brought to bear on how to consider the projected effects of sea level rise. We made a very specific decision not to put a single elevation in our regulations. As soon as we decided on a very specific elevation, that number would change. The only, one of the things that we know most about our understanding of climate change and sea level rise is that it always, it is changing, it is constantly changing. So we chose not to establish a standard that would be out of date before we got to final regulations. This addresses extended-term licenses. Presently, any applicant seeking an extended-term license, the department uses its discretionary authority to, to require the consideration of projected sea level rise. Is it my, for the last four and a half years, my favorite part of the 91 regulations has been other relevant factors. We have considered that to be projected sea level rise. There are some changes to engineering and construction standards with regard to reference to FEMA regulations. I encourage you to look at those. These, this is a little more detail on items I mentioned earlier. With regard to building height, what we intend, what we seek to do through this change is to allow building owners to move utilities, switch gear, what have you, building systems, et cetera, from areas that are vulnerable to flooding, be that the ground floor, the basement, or the second floor, I suppose, to the roof. When those, when the movement of those items to the roof requires an enclosure, for instance, maybe for switchgear, the department, the department under Chapter 91 will not have that triggered amendment. Presently, you can put unenclosed utilities on the roof. That doesn't affect building height. But if, if those utilities have to go in an enclosure, municipalities may interpret those that differently. That may be an increased building height. If the department is relying on the municipality for building height, that could cause an unintended consequence. And then lastly, the activities not requiring a license or permit. My previously favorite section, 905.3. 905.3C, oh, excuse me, M, allows for work within nine, certain non-tidal rivers and streams that does not affect, does not reduce the space available for navigation and has in order of conditions. That is an existing exemption. I have been a part of many robust conversations that talk about what is scour protection, what is bank stabilization, et cetera. This change is an attempt to clarify that for both the department and the regulated community. Promise this would be a short presentation. This is the schedule for these 1.0 regulations. Much of this has happened already. Today's January 25. We have another public hearing tonight at 6:00 PM. Tell your colleagues. Anyone is welcome. Public comments are due on March 1. Public information sessions, which was a fair amount of question and answer, and these public hearings, this one at 6:00 PM, will all be posted on the department's website. Excuse me. We're about to invite public testimony today. As, as you all know, this session is being recorded, so if you choose not to submit a written comment, your comments will still be considered. We strongly suggest the comments be submitted in writing so that they are given full weight, full consideration. It's easy, it's to facilitate our consideration and publication of your comment and our eventual responses. Please submit those electronically if you can. If you're unable, you can submit them by hard copy as well. Addresses are provided there and in the chat. So I don't have a watch, but that was a very brief presentation. All of this information is on the DEP's website. We're going to take, we're now going to take oral testimony. And if
Pardon me one second. I did, I did put in the chat the protocol for the oral testimony. I don't know, folks may have just joined us recently, but as Daniel just mentioned, check the, the top of the chat and you will find both the link to our website that has the materials and recordings from the previous public information sessions, and will include the, the recordings from today and this evening in a few days. There's also registration links there for today and, and this evening's hearing. And then also, there's a brief blurb about our protocol for, for oral testimony today, so either I can go over that or Daniel you can.
Something went wrong there.
All right, I can, I can fill in. So what we'll do is, we have, let me just take a peek here. We have many participants today, and we want to make sure that we can accommodate everybody who wishes to, to present or offer oral testimony. So what we'll do is, if you plan to do that, please put in the chat your name and your affiliation, and then we'll call on you in that order. And to make sure that we can accommodate everybody today, each person will have three minutes as an opportunity to speak, and then if we get through the entire queue of folks who do want to offer testimony, we can always circle back if prior folks had to abbreviate or curtail their prepared remarks. That, a short version of that is also in the chat. And Daniel, at the moment, we have just one taker who has put her name in the chat to deliver testimony, so let me know if we're ready to roll on that.
If you're waiting for me to say ready, I'm ready.
Okay. All right. So that's Monica Driggers from Mass Rivers Alliance. You have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you very much. I have very brief testimony here. My name is Monica Driggers. I'm the Senior Program Director for the Massachusetts Rivers Alliance. We're a statewide organization with 86 member groups dedicated to protecting and restoring the rivers and streams of the Commonwealth. Overall, Mass Rivers is thankful to Mass DEP for being forward-thinking with these proposed regulatory updates. They're an excellent step in the right direction for protecting our coastal ecosystems and looking out for public safety. In particular, we're really glad to see Mass DEP propose the requirement for all projects to consider projected sea level rise and update the sea level rise data set to resilient mass. Both are long overdue and will help make our infrastructure more resilient to the impacts of climate change. We also very much appreciate Mass DEP's clarification in Section 905 that culvert replacements are exempt from a Chapter 91 license. There are 25,000 or so undersized culverts across the state, so this update opens the door a little wider for all of that important restoration work to occur, making our community safer from flooding and better connecting aquatic habitat. We'll be submitting formal comments and writing on all parts of the Climate Resilience 1.0 package, and also look forward to contributing to 2.0 as well. Thanks again for your leadership on this and for giving us the time to comment today.
Monica, thank you very much.
Next up is Heidi Ritchie from Massachusetts Audubon.
Thank you, Stephanie, Dan, and all. Heidi Ritchie, Director of Policy and Advocacy at Mass Audubon. I want to also thank the agency for all the hard work on this and for the coordination of these reg changes with the wetlands and water quality changes. These are, are more than overdue and really glad to see this moving forward. I support all of Monica's comments that she made on behalf of Mass Rivers. And then I would just add to that without repeating anything that she said. These, these reg changes are focused primarily on protecting the integrity of structures and infrastructure that's at risk from sea level rise and climate change, which is appropriate and necessary. But I would request that in the 2.0 regs, you do more to address the natural systems resiliency, and in particular, work with other programs and agencies on true streamlining for coastal wetlands restoration particularly, but not exclusively salt marshes. The one thing that I would like you to seriously consider, hopefully for this 1.0 regulation, but if you really can't do it there, take a close look at it for 2.0, is exemptions, under the exemptions for existing structures, you now are proposing this new exemption for culvert replacements, which of course we support. But again, thinking about existing embankments and ditches that are located in our salt marshes, the, these structures that were never permitted or licensed. I do think that there should be some recognition of that and treating partial or complete removal, restoration of the natural hydrology as exempt it because it's remediation, it's removing something that was never permitted or licensed. And, you know, reducing the degree of non-compliance. So, you know, I know that I had asked this question in the info session, and Dan had said, well, the culverts, there are structures that have been functioning and in service, and so it's just an, it's maintenance, in kind of replacement of, of things that already exist, whether they were licensed or not. And I just wanted to clarify that my request here is more about, you know, remediation for things that were never permitted in the first place and that are causing ongoing adverse impacts. So that concludes my comments. We do plan to submit written comments before the deadline. I think that there are a number of organizations that are considering requesting an extension, although I know you gave an extend, you know, 60 days here. It's still, it did fall partly within the holidays and this whole regulatory package with the other regulations. It's pretty complex to look at, so wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. I, I said we would only hear testimony, but I want to clarify one point that Heidi made, and that is that the changes to 905.3 that are proposed is not a new exemption. It is the clarification of an existing exemption. The very specific item that brought that to us has to do with if an existing culvert is not jurisdictional because the culvert is too small, that work is already exempt. The, it's the department's intention here is to allow for a small amount of work immediately upstream and immediately downstream of that, so as to not require a license for essentially two feet upstream and two feet downstream, as an example, of an already exempt project. So we are not creating a new exemption. It is our, is our interest here in clarifying an existing one. But I, I do welcome your support for that. Thank you.
For the folks who, we had several folks join us recently, and thank you, Heidi. I, I wanted to note that you were exactly at three minutes until we started talking about the other piece, so very nicely done. So for folks who joined us before we described the protocol, you can either check the chat, or I will just repeat briefly that if you, if you would like to offer oral testimony at this hearing, you can put in your name and affiliation in the chat, and we will call on you. In order to accommodate everybody, we're going to limit remarks at this first round for three minutes per person, and then if we get through everybody, we will gladly circle back to those who had to abbreviate their initial remarks. And the next up is Steve Hollinger.
Good afternoon. This is Steve Hollinger, resident of Fort Point. I don't claim to be an expert in this area, so I'll just put forward some minor concern, and I appreciate the work by DEP, and I appreciate the work of advocates in these areas. One concern is that as a consequence of sea level rise, we'll be seeing the increase, the increasing inability of water, stormwater to drain, and stormwater inundation will be an issue not only because of sea level rise, but with increasing storm activity and increasing volumes of water in each storm. So with that, I haven't been able to find any kind of mitigation in terms of trying to say this correctly, but if projects come forward, they should be possibly considering higher levels of capture requirements to, for retention or detention of stormwater on-site, and also outside of the coastline, this becomes an issue, it becomes an issue far outside the coastline where areas are just going to be inundated by stormwater. So I do recommend, I mean, just again, as an in-expert recommendation, that more consideration be given to stormwater inundation, not only on the coastline, but further inland than the coastline. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve. I encourage you to, I know you'll submit your comments in writing very consistently in that regard, and I appreciate that. I'd like to direct you to the wetlands regulations, those proposed draft regulations as well, and that, the topic that you raised is very close to the goals of that, those regulations.
Yes, thank you, Steve. And I will put in the chat the link to the wetlands that includes the stormwater management updates. The regulation page that will have the materials and recordings from those information sessions, as well as the links to register for those, for those hearings. I'll put that in there as well. Hope that doesn't confuse folks because they're two separate packages, but they are interrelated.
Thanks for your comments, Steve.
At this time, there are no other names of folks who wish to present oral testimony in the chat, but that may just be a delay off the, off the starting gun. So just a reminder, for anybody who would like to offer now in this hearing oral testimony for consideration, just put your name and affiliation in the chat, and we will take that in order. As Daniela has rightly pointed out, we very strongly encourage people to also submit written comments, and so if that is the route you plan to go and and don't feel the need to present oral testimony today, that's fine as well. Just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity. While we're waiting for a second, I'm going to go get that other link. Okay. I hope this doesn't confuse folks. I did just put in the chat the link to Mass DEP's webpage for the wetlands regulations and the, hopefully it'll bring you to the landing page for the proposed resilience 1.0, sort of a sister regulations to the ones we're discussing today. The waterways are Chapter 91. So at that link, you will find presentation materials and the recordings of three public information sessions that were held on the wetlands regulations, and that includes provisions updating stormwater management, and also registration links for the, the hearings on, on that set of regulations which are happening next week. And as of now, I see no more, let me just ask out loud in case somebody isn't familiar with the chat function. If there's anybody else who would like to present oral testimony today, feel free to unmute yourself and let us know that. Or raise, raise a hand in the raise hand button, however you want to flag us down. And we'll wait a few minutes. Daniel, FYI, you're not in presentation mode there, so you might want to just make that slide larger. There you go.
I think we have a, we have a hand raised from Brian Esposito.
Hello. How are you? So I know this is a comment section, and I'm kind of like new to reading the proposal because I just heard some stuff recently. But as someone who has a house in West Island and is thinking about rebuilding that house, which means tearing it down and having to rebuild it on piles, I've been told that this could change that in what I have planned, and I can't see how And I can't see how that would affect most of the residents within two streets of, or a street within two rows of houses affected. To doing anything to their property that have cottages at the point and want to make a permanent residence or retirement home. And from what I've been told, this would severely limit that ability and not just for this area, but I'm guessing all coastal areas along the coast. I know this isn't a place for a rebuttal or a conversation, but when someone's not as specific and as knowledgeable about their regs and just found out about this, I find that you know, this is investment, you know, for a lifelong. Myself, there's other residents on the island. I don't know if any of that was ever taken into consideration when these were proposed. But that's my
Brian, I thank you for your comment. This, this is, you're correct, this isn't a forum for back and forth conversation specifically about a single property. You know, I, I would encourage you and encourage others who have, you know, project specific questions to visit the department's website. Chapter 91 Waterways Program, we have got, got a lot of information up there. And I encourage you to reach out to the Waterways Program. It's the same email address. And we'd be happy to, to work with you to help you understand what your current jurisdiction is, at least, and then how that might change.
Thank you.
Are there any other folks who would like to offer oral testimony about this regulation package? Either put your name in the, in the chat function, feel free to hit the raise hand button, which is different than physically raising your hand, or feel free to unmute yourself and just make, make yourself known. So we know that you're interested in providing a, a comment today. There are no other newcomers in the, in the waiting room. So I would venture to say that we can review the protocol for the comment period and submitting written comments and make sure you have that addressing information you need. Again, it's at the website there. And then close the hearing. Daniel, are you able to put that slide up or would you like me to or?
I'm not sure why it's not going up at the moment. Stephanie, please go ahead. I'm not sure why it's not.
Ready?
Thank you.
That accomplish the desired end? Are you guys seeing the thank you slide?
No.
There we go. How about now?
Yes, there you go.
All right. Sorry for that. Delay?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, on behalf of the Waterways Program, I thank you for your, your attendance and your participation and your focus on this. As I said this earlier, this is Waterways Program is my life for many, many parts of my day and my week. This is incredibly, this topic is incredibly important. This is, this is our future. This is, this is 1.0. 2.0 is coming. As you, you draft your comments to submit to us in writing, feel free to add to those comments. Please consider the following additional items as you, as you move into the next phase of dealing with climate change, be it sea level rise or increased precipitation in inland areas. We are, we're, we're working on that and we, all, all questions, all comments, all suggestions are welcome. So please submit written comments by the deadline. And I thank you for your time.
Daniel, never, things are never quite so simple. There were two new folks who just joined us.
Excellent.
And I, and I, I'm sorry to Justine Rooney, and then I didn't catch the other name, but there we were just about to close the hearing as we had no more takers for, for offering oral testimony, but there are two folks who just joined us in the last 90 seconds or so. So if, if you care to offer oral testimony at this hearing, by all means, please make yourselves known by either putting your name and affiliation in the chat or just taking yourself off mute and identifying yourself. And no pressure. If you came here just to see what was going on, there's no need to deliver oral testimony. Okay. Justine responded. She has no comments. And you guys are still seeing the thank you slide?
Yes.
Okay. One final reminder before we close the hearing is that we'll leave the chat open here for a second and for you to get the web link in case you would like to review the materials that were presented today and at the public information sessions last week. And/or if you would like to view the recording of those, of any of these sessions, they will be posted at the link provided. Okay. I think that's a wrap.
Thank you all.